I'd like to take the opportunity to call this meeting to order. Terry, will you do the roll call?
Artian Collier. Eric Coran.
Present.
Kyle Miederman.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here. If you'll stand up and, or I'm sorry, not stand up yet. If you'll take a moment and take a moment of prayer or private reflection. Amen. Now if you'll stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need an executive session, folks? I'm seeing no being the concession here. And then we've got an annual bond update.
Mr. President, members of the board. According to ARS 15-491K, the district is required to hold a public meeting annually between September 1st and October 31st until bond proceeds are spent, at which time an update of the progress of capital improvements financed through bonding is discussed, and at which time the public is permitted an opportunity to comment. The bond report gives a summary of each bond project and the combined expenditures to date. We have a PowerPoint this evening that taught, Series A was in 2016, Series B was in 2019, and the next page just summarizes ARS 15-491K. The next slide shows the voter pamphlet with the total amount that we had expected to expend over the course of the bond. Currently, the expenditures to date are also listed there, and it is far too tiny for me to see right here. I believe it is $32 million roughly, but you can see it there on the presentation. On the next page, it gives you a visual account of the FY '21 expenditures. You can see the athletic fields and our playgrounds, the administrative offices at the high school. And on the next page, project completion for FY '21, there was construction, remodeling, and renovation. The building renovations, the front office security improvements happened at all eight schools. And for land improvements, we had athletic fields, fencing, walkways, stairs and ramps, and playgrounds at the high school, Thunderbolt Middle School, Oro Grande Classical Academy, and Starline Elementary. We also had in FY '21, transportation, two route buses and one activity bus. For technology, on the next slide, we had the, on the next slide, there's the Fortinet phone system with 500-plus phones that were purchased. Informacast was our bells, clocks, and intercom systems, projectors and monitors, laptops, desktops, and district-wide Wi-Fi improvements. For future projects, we have land improvements, walkways, ramps, stairs, fencing, and playgrounds for the remaining elementary schools. Transportation, we have buses that are on order, one route bus and two special needs buses, and we're expected to do a Series C bond sale in the fall of 2022. And that is the end of our update for this year. If there are any questions that I cannot answer, I will get them to Mr. Murray, and he will have an answer to you.
Any questions? Not seen any. I'll move on to 2.1, which is our call to public.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Mrs. Rebecca Stone and school superintendent and school board members. My name's Diane Klostermeyer. I'm here to speak as a mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother on the awesome responsibility you have in teaching our children. Thank you for your altruistic efforts to provide an excellent educational experience for all our students. I am here to respectfully request that you prevent four major destructive programs, which are being used in some school district, namely, critical race theory and other titles used for it, two, woke, three, the transgender education, and four, fallacious historical education, which undermines our true history and love of our nation. Thank you for providing classical liberal arts by Hillsdale College being taught at Oro Grande School, and I also learned that it is now being used in the other schools in our district, too. Thank you so much. As far as critical race theory and other programs with acronyms, different acronyms, they wrongfully teach racial prejudice exists among all white people and creates a divisiveness among the students rather than engendering the fact that we are all Americans who have mutual respect for one another and who love our country. Number two, woke education also creates divisiveness by teaching racism and encouraging students to embrace a progressive activism, leading to the destruction of our historical heritage and love of our country's constitutional values and traditions. It causes disparity in our English language and undermines family and country unity. For example, calling a parent a birthing person rather than a mother and father is atrocious. A family is built on love, common beliefs, and values, which should be cherished and promoted, not trashed. The words "he" or "she" are not racist or showing lack of respect for any individual. Three, as a retired nurse, I believe the transgender education, starting as early as first grade, is appalling. It shows disregard for the child's normal development, which occurs at puberty and adolescence when they will experience normal biological and physical changes, such as voice and male muscular and biological development, and girls' breast changes and menses, et cetera, thereby defining their normal sexual development. For the few who have transgender concerns, they can then maturely seek medical advice. And number four, lastly, some programs are promoting teaching a false history of our country. The student should be taught a great pride for our nation founded under God and to use their talents and abilities to correct any mistakes and to contribute to make our country better. Our country, the United States of America, has done more good for the whole world than any other country, whether it is during national disasters, hunger, health needs, human oppression, dictatorial killing of people, such as what's done by Hitler. I want to thank you for your kind attention and for your service. I'm hoping that none of these programs are in our schools at this time. Education is an awesome vocation, and it should focus on teaching our children reading, writing, math, true history, and human dignity and pride in being part of the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. That brings us to item number three.
I'd like to make a little comment on that. And this is just making sure that you know that we are not aware of any of those programs that are being taught in the district. We always encourage parents, if they find something that they do not agree with, to bring it to their principals and bring it to the district. And in the last few meetings, we are trying to get out ahead of this, and I wanted to read kind of what we were doing in case folks had not seen what we were doing in the last few meetings as opposed to policy and what we have inside, inside our policies. So what I'm reading are the basic, let me see, they're called the seven statutes, and this is what's, yes, it is on, so let me get a little closer. It's in the Arizona State Statutes. It's the seven concepts that we're supposed to, you know, let me just read. No public monies can be used for training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex. This does not include any of the training on sexual harassment, though. But blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex is defined by the seven statute or concepts. Here they are. Number one, one race, ethnic group, or sex is inherently moral or intellectually superior to another race, ethnic group, or sex. Any individual by virtue of the individual's race, ethnicity, or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. Three, an individual should be invidiously, is that right? Invidiously? I think that's a misprint. Individually discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of the individual's race, ethnicity, or sex. An individual's moral character is determined by the, is determined by the individual's race, ethnicity, or sex. An individual by virtue of the individual's race, ethnicity, or sex bears responsibility for actions committed by other members of the same race, ethnic group, or sex. An individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or other form of psychological distress because of the individual's race, ethnicity, or sex. Meritocracy or traits, such as hard work ethic, are racist or sexist or were created by members of a particular race, ethnic group, or sex to oppress members of other race, ethnic group, or sex. So we are not allowed to do those, have any curriculum that does that. Now, you know, what we are really looking for going forward is that when we are looking at curriculum, we want to have a very open process, and we want to invite parents, community members, to join us and help make sure that the curriculum that we are presenting forward, like I think we did with our elementary schools, is matching what the community is wanting. So that is just what I wanted to say, just to make sure and get some information out there.
Ms. Barry Roushern, thank you so much. God bless you.
Okay, let's go do it.
So we are going to move on to item 3.2, and tonight we are recognizing Mrs. Lori Gray, if she will join us, for her contributions as an educator for the Lake Havasu High School CTE Law and Public Safety Program. Mrs. Gray, come on up here. All the way up. Mrs. Gray has spent a great deal of time developing this program over the last four years, and during that time, she has added courses to her coherent sequence to help further student interest in her program. She has fostered relationships within our community to create a strong advisory board and worked with the Lake Havasu Police Department to secure a lab simulator donation to teach students how to react in high-pressure industry situations. Her newest role is as an advisor for the youth court club. She and her students travel weekly to the Lake Havasu City courtroom, where they gain experience in reviewing cases. Recently, Mrs. Gray received the Wave Outstanding Work Award, of which she was very deserving. We wanted to recognize her commitment to the students at Lake Havasu High School and share our appreciation for her amazing work. Thank you. And you're getting a picture. Come over here. Let's get him up. Here we go.
Hi, Ray.
Thank you.
Right, Scott. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. If you want to come right here, you can give me that. Okay. For our next recognition, October is National Principals Month, recognizing the essential role that principals play in making a school great. Research shows that their work is second only to classroom instruction among school-related factors affecting student achievement. Our principals are dedicated and determined to develop positive school culture for our staff, students, and parents, which in turn impacts achievement, attendance, discipline, and many other factors of the educational experience for our LHUSD staff and students. We want to thank them, all of our principals, for the tireless work they do each day. It is greatly appreciated, and I'm excited to see you all here this evening. But if you would join us, we're going to start with our high school team. Mr. Becker is our Lake Havasu High School principal. Dustin Zampona, who may be doing something athletics at this point. Amy Barney is an assistant principal at the high school. Shannon Williams is our other assistant principal at the high school. At Thunderbolt Middle School, Gordy Hall is our principal, and Jennifer Black is our assistant principal. Our Havasu Online program is run by Mr. Roger Berger.
Joe, I appreciate it. Cheeseburger. Can you bring the chicken?
And we're going to bring up all of our elementary principals. So at Oro Grande Classical Academy, we have Mr. Brett Bitterman. At Smoke Tree Elementary, Ms. Nina Mercing. At Nautilus Elementary, Mr. John Moss. At Starline Elementary, Ms. Cory Triasi. At Jamaica Elementary, Ms. Andrea Heller. At Havasu High Elementary, Ms. Tamara Yates. That's all, that's all of our elementary principals. Sorry, can I try to get them in a row here? Can you get us all in? Cheese.
Oh, yeah. Perfect, thank you.
And I just want to personally thank them for their work, because they are in the schools, on the ground, every day with our kids and our parents and our teachers, and we could not get anything done if they weren't there doing the work they do. So I just greatly appreciate all of you.
And as a parent, I have kids, so I understand what you guys go through. I've got one at the high school now and one at the middle school. That brings us to item number four, which is the consent agenda. Can I have a vote motion on that?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Kyle Miederman.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes.
John Mastin.
There's nothing under item five, so that brings us to six, which is you.
I'm up again. Mr. President, members of the board. LHUSD has been reviewing and revising the Administrator and Director Evaluation and Growth Systems with a focus on student achievement. This tool was developed in alignment with ARS 15-503 and 15-341, and was created with a philosophy that ongoing data should be gathered and used in decision-making across all levels of the district. The change in the director evaluation aligns with the administrator evaluation tool that was adopted in June 2021, which states that administrator expectations should be rigorous, clear, and equitable. Quality feedback and systems of support are essential to improve leadership practice. Administrators must be effective instructional and organizational leaders, and all leaders impact student learning. The LHUSD Director Evaluation Instrument is based on the Marzano-focused leadership model, an integrated cascading evaluation system designed with improved student learning as the ultimate goal. This model was developed using the Wallace Foundation study titled "Investigating the Links to Improve Student Learning," which studied the relationship between administrative behavior and actions at all levels of a school district and student academic achievement. Ultimately, this study confirmed that both school and district leadership can influence student achievement. The evaluation tool streamlines forms for directors, and the evaluator provides timelines and sets out clear expectations. The tool also provides opportunities for district leaders to set goals in areas that are aligned with supporting student achievement and success. And I do just want to thank our principals and some teachers and directors. All worked on the principal evaluation system. We also had some principals and our directors who worked on aligning this system with that, so we are all together in what we're working towards with our students.
Yes, and looking over that, I was very impressed that we are really aligning what we're doing rather than having two kind of disjointed type of evaluation systems, so I appreciate this change.
I also appreciated the fact that it has specific look fours for each of the different things that, for each of the different objectives. I think that that's really important, so that it's not just words on a piece of paper, but people know specifically the actions that would indicate that they've met
I move that we accept 6.1 as presented.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes.
Kyle Miederman.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes. That brings us to 6.2, Human Resources.
Mr. President, members of the board. On September 20th, 2016, the governing board approved an alternative procedure to meet the requirements of Senate Bill 1263, Arizona Vice Statute 15-341. With the alternative procedures, the principals, assistant principals, directors, and superintendent will receive an equal portion of a designated sum if they meet all requirements. The breakdown of the requirements will be as follows: 25% for academic gain, 25% for parent satisfaction, 25% for professional development, and 25% for teacher satisfaction. The alternative procedure chosen by LHUSD has been previously approved by legal, and it is attached there in the exhibit.
I make a motion to approve item 6.2.
Second.
I do have one question. For the parent satisfaction component, how will that be determined?
We distribute annual surveys to our families. We have paper and electronic copies available. Our title schools have a specific parent survey that Ms. Festa and I will partner on to make sure that it's aligned to all the other things that we're currently doing within the evaluations, but we typically do that in the spring, January, February.
Yeah, and I also heard that we have a very high return rate on those, so it's a very good tool since we have such a high return rate.
I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Yes, thank you.
Eric Coran.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Kyle Miederman.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes. 6.3, Human Resources.
Again. Mr. President, members of the board. With the passage of Senate Bill 1139 in 2020, legislation pertaining to the Classroom Site Fund was changed to allow for broader uses of funds and recognize different ways teacher performance can be assessed. In response to this change in legislation, a new 301 framework was presented to and approved by the LHUSD Board on June 15th, 2021. The approved frameworks state that site goals are to be approved by the board. Lake Havasu Unified School District and its stakeholders have high expectations for our students, teachers, and administrators. Each site sets goals annually to improve student learning. These goals are submitted to and approved by the superintendent each fall. Successful attainment qualifies staff members to receive 25% of site-based goals money for each of the four components. The four components for the site-based goals are as follows: student achievement, professional development, family engagement, and individual summative evaluation score. In summary, four of our elementary schools have chosen math as their goal, focusing on number sense and/or algebraic operations. Pre-to-post test data will be used to show growth. Two of our elementary schools have chosen literacy, with a focus on providing text-based evidence with both fiction and nonfiction texts using QAR, reciprocal teaching, and close reading strategies as instructional strategies to promote literacy development. Pre-to-post test data will be used to show growth. All elementary sites have a PE and either music or art performance component in their plan. Elementary sites have also included counselor goals focusing on social and emotional skills from the board-approved Toolbox Curriculum to promote positive behaviors needed in the classroom for academic achievement. Our middle school has chosen a goal tied to specialized academic vocabulary to prepare students for the more technical courses offered in high school, college, and career. Pre-to-post test data will be used to show growth or proficiency. Lake Havasu High School has chosen a goal measuring student performance on targeted objectives from semester one final exams. Pre-to-post test data will be used to show growth or proficiency, and our secondary school counselors have been included in the academic achievement plans as a support to students and teachers in helping meet cycles.
I move we approve 6.3 as presented.
I'll second.
Just one note on the discussion here. I appreciate that we had, you know, the committees of the different schools come up with them. I like how they're tied to goals and really measurable ones. I was looking through, and I feel like the academic achievement, because we are instituting a new curriculum, is maybe not as, it's maybe a little conservative for this year, so next year I would like to see us try and reach a little bit more for some higher goals in that area, but I'm okay with, for this year, since it's a new curriculum for many of the schools.
I think it's probably a combination of the fact that it's a new curriculum and the fact that this is still a recovery year from next, from last year.
And we are also working through a new assessment tool that staff are learning to navigate and use as well. Lot of changes, and like you pointed out, on top of kids coming back from all different circumstances last year, but I will make note of that and share that with our 301 committee.
Okay, we're ready.
Kyle Miederman.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Coran.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes. That brings us to 6.4, which is Student Achievement Business Services by Lake Havasu City Fire Department Memorandum of Understanding.
The purpose of this memorandum of understanding between Lake Havasu Unified School District and Lake Havasu City Fire Department is to enter into a partnership to provide career exposure and exploration in the area of fire and rescue to participating LHHS students. The program introduces students to fire service occupations, focusing on the principles, theories, and practices associated with the management of fire operations, firefighting services, and community fire issues. Program instruction will include fire protection history and theory, incident command leadership, administration of public fire organizations, labor relations, emergency medical services management, fire emergency response strategies and mitigation, legal and regulatory responsibilities, budgeting, public relations, and organizational leadership. The program will provide students for entry-level employment, further training, and/or post-secondary education in the fire service. Using CTE funds, LHUSD will provide $10,000 each semester to Lake Havasu City to be used solely for the fire service program needs, including, but not limited to, instructors' wages and benefits, teacher certification fees, DPS fingerprint clearance card attainment, fire station rental, materials, supplies, and equipment. The Lake Havasu City Fire Department will provide fire instructors, who will follow the career and technical education standards and prepare students for industry credentials as laid out by the Arizona Department of Education. Upon approval of this MOU by all parties, the Introduction to Fire Science Course will begin in January of 2022. Students will use a classroom at Lake Havasu High School and also have access to off-site fire facilities for lab activities. The Introduction to Fire Science Course was previously approved by the LHUSD Governing Board on December 17th, 2022.
Board on December 17, 2019. No action was taken at the time, as no instructor could be found. Approval of the attached MOU allows the fire service program to continue until May 31, 2023. It will be reviewed at that time. Either party may terminate this MOU within 90 days' notice and completion of semester grades for students. The MOU has been forwarded to District Council and the city attorney for review and approval. Deputy Chief Fire Chief Scott Hartman is here for any questions, as long as CTE Coordinator Marsha Becker.
I do have one question. Is this envisioned as a one semester class, or is there a possibility of continuing it?
So this is, we're piloting this for one semester this year, and then it'll be a two semester class. So first semester will be Level One, and second semester will be the advanced level, and then it will continue on to MCC.
I'm just so grateful that we have another cool, excellent program for our students, another opportunity for them. I know it's been, you know, a couple of years, and we couldn't find it. I'm glad we have the personnel to do it now. Great.
I agree. I was talking, I'm sorry.
No, it's good to see avenues like this opened up in our community, too. You know, this will allow for job opportunities even for some of our high schoolers for after high school, you know, with secondary education with MCC. I think this could be a great thing, so.
I agree. I think from the fire department perspective, we're very excited about it. We're very much looking forward to being program started. We're excited about the opportunities I think it's going to present to the kids of high school.
I move that we accept 6.4 as presented.
I'll second.
Great vote.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Eric Aran?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
John Maston?
Absolutely, yes. That brings us to 6.5, Business Services.
Business Services, Mr. President, members of the board, has presented the approval of vouchers for September 2021 in the amount of $3,740,149.59, and student activity funds for July 2021, $280,805.2, and for August 2021, $286,978.67.
I move to approve item 6.5.
Second.
Terry, go ahead.
Eric Aran?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. That brings us to informational stuff. We'll start with the superintendent.
So recently, Arizona School Boards Association had the law conference, and three of our members were able to attend, so we have some certificates for them. For Lisa Romano, we have the Certificate of Boardsmanship. For Eric Aran, we have the Certificate of Orientation. And for Kyle Niederman, we also have the Certificate of Orientation. And just a reminder that as the city celebrates their 50th anniversary, our schools will be a part of the London Bridge Day's Parade on October 30 at 10:00 a.m., so we hope everyone can come out and support their efforts at walking in the parade and enjoying the celebration.
Okay, any informational stuff from board members?
Just a reminder that the K-12 Taste of Havasu is tomorrow.
Anything else? Do we have any further calls to the public?
No, we do not.
Okay. Any board suggestions for future agenda items? And if we have any media here, do you need any clarifying questions answered? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Eric Aran?
Yes.
John Maston?
Always goes quicker when I'm up here next. Yes.